Trustee Hack.
I'd be here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha. Vice President Lathan.
Here.
President Lewis.
Here. So now we will enter closed session.
Okay.
Do I have any discussion on this item?
I move approval.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. All right, next up, item four, the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. So, I know many of you are aware of this. I'm pleased to say that we have broken ground, finally, after many delays at the Deer Valley turf, so excited to see that moving forward. This week, Mr. Turnage, Ms. Robbins, and I met with an architect so we could begin touring some of our sites, should the board approve tonight's resolution to go forward with a bond, so that he's gonna draw some renderings of what improvements that might look like at some of our schools. Monday, all AUSD schools will be recognizing World Kindness Week. This is a week where students and staff are encouraged to make a personal declaration to service and charity. And finally, we're gonna talk a little bit later this evening, there's a resolution on the board for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, and that is November 14th. Finally, I just wanna say, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hope you spend it with your family and have a wonderful time.
Absolutely. So, thank you for that superintendent report. Any comments around the report? Okay. All right, next up is the student delegate report, and I believe, please for now, forgive me if I'm pronouncing it fiffita?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's your pop quiz.
Right.
Hey! Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Fafita Gru, and I'm Antioch High Student Body President. This week, our peer educators, lean crew, and leadership students band together to participate and start with Hello Week, which is a national call-to-action event dedicated to making social connections and creating a sense of belonging among youth. Our girl-powered group, Lean Crew Leadership Students and Peer Educators, helped facilitate a successful empowerment event for all eighth-grade girls in our district. We had a fun homecoming week, which included Spirit Days, the crowning of Jennifer Pina Rivera as Queen, and Georgelia Lobos as Mr. Panther, and a high-energy homecoming dance. Our Lean Crew students continued to visit Belshaw on Wednesdays to do activities and form strong bonds with our district's elementary school students. We just finished celebrating Dia de los Muertos and Hispanic Heritage Month with community-building events at lunch and after school. These events included the Antioch High Band playing wonderful music, a performance by the Latin Dance Club, Lotería and Uno Games, delicious Hispanic food, and Ofrenda and announcements of notable Hispanic influencers in society. These celebrations brought many students together to celebrate Hispanic heritage and created a culture where students felt comfortable sharing stories and relics of their loved ones who have passed. Student outreach to the community is blossoming. The Antioch High School After-School Program held a sip-apple-juice-and-paint event with seniors from Tre Vista Senior Living. This was the first of our collaborative, monthly, intergenerational activities. Back on campus, students organized a Black Student Union to provide a platform for students to organize events, promote an understanding about African-American culture, and offer academic and social emotional support. BSU meets every Tuesday. Twenty-five students at Antioch High School are reclassified. On January 11, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM, we'll honor and celebrate their achievement with a ceremony. Please come and join us to congratulate these students. We're currently gearing up for our Warm for the Holidays giveaway, which serves hundreds of AUSD students with free books, hoodies, toys, and groceries before winter break. Our after-school program is going strong with BACR, and we're at the end of our fall sports season, which featured a 15% increase in participation from last year. Each group bumped up their team average GPA, and four of our fall sports teams earned a Scholar Team status, a GPA over 3.0. And we kicked off this year with the debut of Girls' Flag Football as a new sport, where we congratulated our very own Nick Wisely for being named Fall Coach of the Year by BeVal.
Yes, yes.
Two of our Edge Academy teachers partnered for two cross-curricular projects, one on climate change and other, which showed a real-world connection to Roman and Greek inventions. During this integrated unit, students were asked to take a survey where our teachers were very supportful, and the attendance daily average went from 93.58% in August to 96.9% in October. Next week, our Media Tech and Careers in Teaching students will lead 52 3rd and 4th graders from Kimball Elementary around the distinct rooms and artifacts exhibited throughout Antioch Historical Museum. We are really doing a lot at Antioch High. These are just a few of the many ongoing fun events happening at our school. I'm so proud to be a Panther because I get to participate in these amazing activities and share in creating wonderful experiences and memories. Thank you for your time and have a great rest of your evening.
So, thank you for coming. It's always amazing to hear the voices of our young folks. I can say that now, officially have more gray hair than black, so I can say young people now.
May I say that I understand, aren't you the quarterback or something like that?
The quarterback?
Oh, yeah, flag football.
Ah, okay.
Flag football is something new. It's gonna be done all over the state.
Okay. I'm gonna have to come out and check it out.
We have it in our system already.
As a DB, you know, I was on the other side of the ball, so I have to come out and check you out. See if I can pick you off on time.
Besides that, she does basketball.
And volleyball and softball.
See?
So, there's this new thing called sleep. You know, you might, you know, think about trying sometimes. Just joking, I'm super proud of you. So, thank you for being here and thanks for all that you-
We're all proud of you.
Yeah, so. All right. So, next up, item six, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. It looks like we have two. The first is Amanda Freitas.
Good evening. First, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Katie Ingles, who organized an elementary soccer camp. It was really amazing. My son was out there the last four weeks, super pumped and excited, socializing with his peers, learning some soccer skills and the process. So, I just wanted to give her a shout-out, because that was really awesome to see all of our students out there. Next, just regarding the bond, I just really hope that the district listens to what parents, staff, and community have to say. I saw that, you know, people have been able to go on the padlet and give their feedback, but I just hope that they really take that feedback and work that into the things that we're gonna see the bond cover. I just feel like in the past, there's been opportunities for parents to get feedback, and I feel like it seems in the moment during the meeting, we're listened to, but we're not heard, because that's not really turned into action. And I feel like that's one of the reasons why we don't really have a lot of parent engagement, because they feel like they give their opinion on things, and then nothing happens from it. So, I just hope that with this bond, we can start to build back some of that trust and really take what our parents, staff, and community have to say for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's an extremely important point, because in addition to being fiscal stewards, we also wanna make sure that we are reflective of the district in terms of what we're doing and what we say we're gonna do. So, thank you for that. All right, next up is Gavin.
Good evening, Council. I wanna come up here and thank you guys for all coming to our Champions for Youth banquet. It was a good turnout of 260 people, so I wanna thank you for helping us make change and make history, because it was our first annual event. Also, I wanted to talk about what happened in the elementary school, and I would like for the school board and the superintendent to meet with the East County NWAACP Youth Council as to how we can make some changes and make this as an educational moment, and also to probably speak on what happened and to try to bring unity in our community. Because right now, in this damn time, we are still dealing with COVID, we're still dealing with homelessness, and we need to come together and be united, because we're not gonna get anywhere being divided. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Gavin, I just wanted to check with you. Was I mistaken? Did we not have a school board table or a city council table for Pittsburgh?
For Pittsburgh?
Uh huh. At the NWAACP?
Um, no, I'm not-
Were we the only ones there then? The city and the school district?
Yeah.
Oh, well, plus for us. Just wanted to say that. A plus for us, then.
Yeah.
We support you.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Gavin. I believe this is Melissa Cuss?
Case.
Case, I'm sorry. That, yes.
Hello. I am an AHS graduate, 1988. Proud to say that. Had a great time in high school. Thanks to teachers and my parents. I'll take them. I'm here because I watch you guys online. I wanna say, Clyde, I really love the way you run the show. I think it's been the best over in 20 years. I'm just gonna say that. I think one of the primary responsibilities of the school board is to establish educational standards and curriculum guidelines, and school board trustees are actively engaged in formulating the educational standards and policies with the goal of ensuring high-quality education for our district students. The emphasis on educational excellence is particularly vital, I think, for the Antioch School Board, because our district currently exhibits the lowest academic performance when it compared to neighboring communities, and this has concerned me for a long time. Regrettably, there's been a lack of significant initiatives to me in regard over the past several decades, so I'm not just blaming it on you. It's been, it's been. There's current controversies and distractions. I loved what the young man had to say, that are, to me, trying to divert our attention away from this critical issue of helping our students achieve greatness, as far as school testing. Our students are great. Addressing this problem, I think, requires a collective effort from the entire community, not just the school board, not just the teachers, but also the parents. And it's also imperative that we come together as a community to address this issue. I'm strong, I don't send my kids to Antioch Schools for reasons involving your son, unfortunately, when he first started. We've since resolved those facts, because my kids don't go here anymore. I just think that it's been quite frustrating to witness the excuses from somebody I love, down to you guys, about the excuses on why our students don't excel. I don't believe there is an appropriate excuse, and I think that needs to stop. We should probably scrutinize the reasons behind the differing levels of success among our local high school. Dozier Libby gets really high scores. Why is that? Why can't we replicate that at AHS? I don't really pay attention to Deer Valley, because I didn't go there, but I look at Antioch High School, because that's my school. I still root for them, all the time. So, regarding recent controversies, I just would like that not to be a distraction to what your current goal is. And that's it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up is Velma Wilson.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, to you, the board trustees, our superintendent, her cabinet, and you all in the community. This is just your friendly parent liaison giving you some quick updates, this happenings of what's happening here. Join Delta Veterans Group and the City of Antioch this Saturday for the Annual Veterans Day Ceremony, held at the Antioch Marina. The event will begin with a pancake breakfast at 8:00 AM, then a ceremony where we will have Deer Valley High School and Antioch High School marching bands performing, in addition to two student speakers. Lastly, the parade, starting at 11 o'clock. There's still time for you board trustees to get your parade application in. Parents and community, there are two important meetings coming up. D-LAC is Thursday, December 7, at 9:00 AM, and the African-American Parent Advisory Meeting is Thursday, December 7, at 5:30 PM. You can go to the district website, under the Parent tab, to connect to the meeting virtually, or for the D-LAC meeting, join in person at the Newcomer Center. Shout-out again to Essence Phillips and her staff for just holding down that Newcomer Center. If you have not visited, go and visit. It is nothing short of amazing. The annual Dr. King Art and Essay Contest is underway. The deadline to enter is December 11 by 4:00 PM. Please get the information at your school sites, as all principals and all teachers have the information, or you can email me, velmawilson@antioschools.net, for the entry information and the guidelines. I look forward to seeing all of you there, and don't forget, we are AUSD.
All right. Thank you for that. Next up is item 6A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. The first one is Amber Dagan.
Hello, good evening. So, I would like to speak about my experiences this year so far, attempting to get much-needed support from my students. I have been deeply troubled by the way IEP meetings have been conducted so far this year. I have been frankly belittled, undermined, ignored, insulted during my IEP meetings. My first IEP meeting of the year could only be described as hostile and aggressive. When I walk into an IEP meeting, I expect us to be a team, and we are there to help the student. However, this year feels very, very different. It feels like the IEP meeting has been decided before it's even started. It feels like my opinion, as a student's teacher and as a professional, doesn't matter at all. I really pride myself on being pretty thorough, and I have a lot of information about my student. I have lots of data. I regularly assess my students, but none of that matters during the IEP meeting. I have been told that my data doesn't matter, or that they are not interested in seeing it, that, you know, essentially, it just feels like my opinion on this matter doesn't matter, and it also frankly feels like the opinions of the parents don't matter either. I feel like this is a huge problem, because this does not benefit the students at all. It's really easy to be the person out there who doesn't know anything about the student, to swoop in and go, nope, you're not getting anything, and then walk away. But I'm the one that has to be, I have to deal with the outcome of that decision every single day. I have to watch my students suffer academically, knowing that they could be doing so much better and so much more if they're given help. I don't understand why the district is engaging in this denying and delaying of help, but it's not to the benefit of the students, and I need that to be really clear. Research consistently shows that early intervention, early in their academic career, K through 2, is the best way, and even if you wanna go from it from like a bottom-line standpoint, the most economic way of using sped resources. Children's brains literally get rewired when they learn to read, and the earlier you do that, the better. So, denying and delaying until 3rd or 4th grade virtually ensures that these students are not gonna get, they're not gonna be academically successful. And if the idea is to say we don't want students to have sped services throughout the rest of their entire academic career, denying and delaying until 3rd and 4th grade is not achieving that goal. In fact, it's virtually ensuring that will be the case.
All right, so, thank you for that, Amber. Next is Karma Bergstadt.
Hi, good evening. I'm an instructional assistant over at Marsh Elementary, and as most of you know, there's some changes that are happening with the instructional assistant job classification. I would just like to suggest some things to the board. Personally, I feel that a seven-hour workday would be beneficial for people like myself who are working only on student hours, and because I'm not there outside of when the students are there, I have no extra time to help my teacher prepare anything for IEPs or make copies, provide student work, assess data, files, anything like that, and I really feel that those things are beneficial to the students, and I come in every day scrambling to get things done, because my teacher is really behind on IEPs, because we have so many cases, and she takes a lot of time. As you all know, IEPs are extensive, and they take a long amount of time for her to do, and it being just the two of us, I need to provide a lot of help as much as I can, and because I don't have outside time, outside of the student hours, I- And because I don't have outside time outside of the student hours, I cannot help her as much as I'd like to. I'd also like to suggest possibly maybe an extra workday for instructional assistants. Instead of being 180, have it be 181 and come in on the possible teacher workday at the beginning of the year to be able to have one day outside of student time to help the teacher set up and prepare and learn classroom procedures and things like that. I'd also like to suggest maybe sending out a survey to instructional assistants to see how they feel about these changes that you guys are proposing. I know a lot of people were not happy about it or had certain things to say, and I feel like we should be able to voice our opinions on those things. Continuity is really important for our students, and we take time to build relationships with them. And as you all know, students with IEPs typically have a lot of behavior things that we need to deal with, and it takes time to build that trust and that relationship. And some of the suggestions about moving instructional assistants around on a frequent basis rather than having them be permanent was concerning because we take time to develop those relationships and create a safe environment for the students to feel trusted and heard. So we'd like for you guys to consider these things, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. So next up, district reports. But before we get to the report, we have three comment cards for this item. The first is from Laura Buett.
Good evening. I'm a little sad that I'm going first and we're not doing the
Would you prefer?
Presentation. I would prefer. Yes, thank you.
So we can go with the presentation first?
Ms. Bar, would you like to introduce?
So I am happy to present. We have our senior director here, Kelly Quinn of Special Education. Then we have Mary Ann Freitz from, she's our executive director with the Contra Costa Selpa. And we also have Director Sharon Spivak is also here to share an overview of our special education program in this district.
Thank you. Nice to meet all of you and to be here. Let me get the volume on first. It's nice to be here and to be presenting with you and your team here, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm starting off this presentation, and we're looking at this as an overview of special education, not just district-wide but statewide, to provide more of a perspective of what's going on, particularly the last few years since COVID and our return to school with all of our students and our programs returning to full pace. What we have seen is that in California, what we are dealing with, as we all know, is a decline in enrollment statewide, but we are seeing an increase in special ed numbers statewide. We used to be traditionally, very consistently for about a 10 to 15-year period, between 10 and 12 percent. And it was a gradual increase, but it was very minimal. In the last three years, we have seen not just statewide, but in this region, Contra Costa County, Alameda County, the percentage of students has increased from 11 to 12 percent in districts to Selpa-wide being up to 16 percent as an average is what we are seeing or increase, but that we have districts now for the first time getting to the 20 percent range and continuing to increase. This is unfortunate, and there are many reasons why we are seeing this. And the reason I say unfortunate is because what we are dealing with statewide is an increase of issues that are not unique here to Antioch, but I think there are some things that stand out and do separate you within our county and within our Selpa. What I'd like to point out are the trends that we are seeing is that throughout California, and it's the next slide, is what we have seen since COVID is that I will continue on. Okay, so what we are seeing is that since COVID, we have had an increase of social-emotional needs. Okay. No, no. All right. So since COVID, what we have seen is an increase of social-emotional needs and behavior in particular is there as well. We have seen an increase as a result of this in costs related to transportation and out-of-placement, out-of-district placements. A shortage of special ed teachers and experience of the teachers is also attributing to this. What used to be teachers coming into new positions where they had gone through their whole training program, had experience in the classroom, and then walked into a classroom is really on the rarity now. New teachers are often interns, working full-time, going to school full-time, and trying to balance all that. What I would tell you is when you get a new teacher, it takes three years to really understand and learn the position, in any position really, but in teaching specifically. However, if you are going to school full-time while doing that, you've got to add on two to three more years for that teacher to really understand what they're doing and to really become kind of professional in regards to the specialties that they're working with. As a result of this, we are seeing the shortage statewide not going down anytime soon, not just in teacher, people going into the field professionally, but with special ed. We're dealing with specialists. We're dealing with classified staff that support our teachers, psychologists, speech therapists. It's a long list, but the shortage I like to point out is not just with teachers, but everybody walking into it. This is a statewide issue, but it's particularly an issue here because in our Selpa and in your area, we have people competing for jobs and positions with neighboring districts. And as a result of that, the competition is really fierce, and I hate to say that, but it's kind of a business approach. And you are competing with next-door neighbors, districts nearby, and as a result of doing that, it's becoming harder and harder to fill these high-need positions. The state unfortunately is not really progressing at the rate we want. We have seen these needs exist for several years, and unfortunately, we are still at the point, I would tell you statewide, where we were 10 years ago, knowing these shortages were coming and issues not being in place to deal with it. What I would like to point out also is that during COVID, school closures occurred, and what we saw as a result of that is all of the compliance monitoring systems that were in place statewide really froze. Understandably, we were in a crisis. We were dealing with things we had never dealt with before. And so systems that had been in place to monitor what we were doing stopped. In the last two years, these have picked up, and the state has now put on compliance issues and updated it. The two big focuses they are looking at is disproportionality, which we'll touch base on in a minute, and also in compliance. In regards to Antioch specifically, what we have seen here in the last few years is the number of preschool students being assessed and qualifying continues to increase. We do not see that decreasing in your district. We do have districts within the Selpa where we are starting to see the numbers go down due to multiple reasons, whether it's the enrollment in the districts or, again, just less students coming up through the system. It hasn't slowed down here. So again, where the state is seeing that decreasing enrollment, what you are seeing is even though there is that happening in some spots and in some curves, the number of students being assessed continues to increase. In California, we are the one state where when assessments are asked for, we need to look through the process and address this directly. Within the nation, we have higher issues regarding that, and you are dealing with that directly and firsthand.
And Mary Ann, if I can step in really quick, chime in a little bit. So, sorry, here we go. Sorry. So I just wanted to chime in here a little bit to around the number of assessments that we've had. So in the 20, you know, the 23, 20, the 22, 23 school year, we had a total of 1,329 assessments that were out. And then from that, because I know there's been some discussion regarding IEEs, we had a total of nine IEEs last year that were requested, which put us at just a little under, like right at half a percent. So I wanted to give those numbers out too because I know there's been some discussion in regards to the amount of assessments that were out.
And you're independent, the IEEs that have been done, again, the numbers being requested here in comparison to your neighboring districts so that you know are significantly lower with the information that I have and have discussed with them. What I would say is that most districts are dealing with probably more in the range of 2 to 5 percent is what we are seeing. And again, that is something that will continue, and that is being asked for, but I think that shows a credit to the thorough assessments that are being done here. In addition, in regards to your compliance, when COVID hit, you had fallen behind significantly as with other districts in this county. What is now being dealt with is the compliance has shown the last two years is that you are largely caught up with the assessments. There is not the backlog that had been in place, and that again, as these are coming in, you are dealing with them directly and within the timeline span that is expected, not just of the state, but I would say within our Selpa as well. And what you also deal with in Antioch, there's two things that really stand out here that I think you deal with that others don't, is there are more group homes in your city. We have one other district within the Selpa that has a fair amount of group homes. You do have more. And where I say that you need is because what we are dealing with are often students coming in with IEPs in very unique and diverse placements, sometimes with more challenging needs, which is understandable. But you are the only district in the last two years where I have seen it go up above the double digits and not decrease. I don't see that decreasing either with the standards and the information we have coming from the state as to why that is happening. The other thing that really stands out here in comparison to what neighboring districts are not dealing with is the increase in foster placements is very significant here. And again, I want to point out when we say that, it doesn't mean that we're concerned when students come in in these unique placements, just that they have more diverse needs and more concrete services that often come with them statewide. We know that very well, and that is not unique here. What is different is your neighboring districts are not dealing with that where you are, and you need to plan for that as you do and continue to know that will probably increase. Yes?
Can I ask a clarifying question because I saw some confused looks in? So if I'm understanding your statement correctly, there's a concentration of foster youth as well as other populations who require specific needs, and there's a higher concentration here in Antioch as compared to neighboring counties?
Neighboring districts.
Neighboring districts, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Neighboring districts. And again, where you have built your department, every department within our Selpa of special ed, there are some things that are consistent, department, department. When you know you have unique needs and where your needs are different is you are building those supports in place so that you can serve them internally instead of doing it externally. And you have to keep planning for that, knowing that is not going to decrease, and you have done a very good job planning for that.
And so the second sort of follow-up question to that, there are resources available sort of at large specifically for foster youth. Is there a possibility that we could also, considering we have the high concentration, is it also possible, and you may get to that at some point, but some of those additional resources to offset, because again, if it's coming out of the district's pocket, we're asking a dollar to be split 50 ways, and other districts are asking, you know, for a dollar to be split 10 ways, but we're still being judged by the same compliance standards?
Yes. And though there are more resources associated in special education, what we know is that there are not more resources directly for students with those needs. Not only are more services required and the shortage we talked about, but when you know you have special populations like this, if you're going to think realistically, which you really need to do, and again, I think your district does a very good job at that, you have to plan that you're not going to be able to fill all those needs, so how are we going to address it? And the state does not keep up with funding, and nor are they in regards to special education. In fact, we're seeing a decrease overall as costs increase. The funding we receive is decreasing overall.
And so you mentioned sped, but also for foster youth, that number's even smaller?
Yes.
Right? So I just want to make it clear, so the amount of money that we receive to support foster youth, it's even disproportionately smaller, even though we have a higher concentration?
And that disproportionality in funding is continuing to increase. Yeah. And I would also say again, associated with students who attend group homes, again, their needs are unique. There are more funding resources, and so you might hear at times that there are more funding avenues that we can access. Those have decreased over time, continue to decrease, and in fact, I would tell you are largely disappearing in comparison to where we were even just 10 years ago.
I have one clarifying, if you're listening at home or here. So we do have the largest concentration of group homes, I believe, in Northern California by some reports. Those are not all AUSD students. These are being placed by outside agencies into Antioch, and the same, we have nearly half the foster students in the county are placed in Antioch. So they're not AUSD students. So think of, I don't know how many districts are in the county offhand, but 18 or so, 14? I don't, I'd be making that up. Yes. So.
Can you clarify Superintendent Nello, what you mean by they are not AUSD students?
Not all of them are AUSD students. So let's say there's someone in Alameda County, they need a foster placement. Alameda County can place them here if there's a foster parent. If there's an opening, any other county can also place a student here.
So, but they do, so then they are a, so they may have come?
Yes, they become.
They are our students.
Absolutely.
And I do want to make a point that we are not disparaging the populations that we're talking about. I do want to make that very clear, but we do want to be very clear and sort of certain that we are identifying the needs of the population. The goal is not to disparage, but to identify, and that way we can develop a plan to address. So I do want to make that clarifying point.
And you want to absolutely not just plan for it, but really look three to five years ahead, because if we do not do that, we fall behind very quickly. And again, those populations are continuing to increase, even though statewide, we're seeing a decrease in enrollment. And what you are dealing with is different than some of your, many of your neighboring districts, particularly within our Selpa. And we are seeing where numbers are maximizing in some districts, you haven't topped off yet, and you need to keep that in mind when planning and developing.
Typically, we wait to the end. So when you say maximizing, so are you suggesting that there is sort of a percentage of concentration for those populations that we should sort of cap at? Am I understanding that correct?
The state, no. The, I would say that, what I say to all districts, to all parents in public meetings I've had, is you don't want to get above 20 percent. And I say that because again, what special ed was intended for was to serve a certain population. If we keep going above 20 percent, and we're seeing that in certain, not, we're seeing that in some areas that we've been able to kind of monitor this data for the last few years, is when you start to do that, you need to look at again, what are the resources we're providing to students before they get into special education? And that's where early intervention comes in, preschool supports, K through 5, I would say to you, is what you need to look at and focus on. And again, I think you do that very well. We've discussed that, and I've been a part of meetings. And also, the compliance through the state is very good in the sense that it forces that subject to come to the forefront and to be addressed and dealt with directly. And so what I want to end with before we switch is again, what you are dealing with with the as this population continues to increase, the last thing I would point out is what you will also see is an increase in your adult transition programs. And those numbers, again, are continuing to increase for you district-wide, where in other districts, we are starting to see that decrease in classes go down in numbers. We don't foresee that here. So you are dealing with not just an increase at the preschool level, but you're dealing with an increase at the adult transition level. And so when planning that out, keep that in mind with all the essential needs that go with supporting what we've just pointed out.
Perfect. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about our goals. I know Mary Ann's going to talk about the SIM plan a little bit, but I wanted to give you an overview of what, you know, our special education staff. And so you can see, we have a director, assistant director, we have a coordinator, eight program specialists. We have one special education information system. She runs our SACE program, two admin assists. We have, currently we have three B C B As, which are our board certified behavior analysis. Along with them are our behavior support specialists, so they work directly with our B C B As and provide that support to schools. We have 30 psychologists, seven occupational therapists, 17 speech and language pathologists, and then there's a typo, put in the assistance there, but we have speech and language pathologist assistants, which also help our S L Ps. We have one physical therapist, we're trying to get, you know, hire a physical therapist, but we do have one opening, 121 special education teachers, and we have two adaptive physical therapy, P E teachers.
Ms. Quinn, the folks that you just listed, are they all employees or are they, some of them contractors?
These, so we have a couple of psychologists that are contractors. We have, there are a couple of contractors in there, and that would be the occupational therapists. We only have two special education teachers right now that are contractors. And speech and language pathologists are contractors. But everybody else is, are ours.
So with compliance, as we touched on, you're dealing with two things in this district that the state has now looked at and will continue to look at. This isn't going to change for several years. I, I would let you know. You're dealing with compliance. So they're monitoring I E P timelines, they're monitoring, are they getting done not just on time, but are they, the reviews that are done every three years for students in this, with I E Ps, are those being done and completed within the appropriate timelines? What we found during COVID is often these were missed statewide, often two years out. That is no longer the case. We're expected to be current. There is no, we are beyond COVID and using those issues. You should be expect that those numbers are current, timely, and really, our goal is zero. What we have found here is not only have you caught up to those timelines with the outdated ones that had been impacted due to families being at home and not in school, but that they're being done, they're being done timely, and your numbers have decreased greatly the last two years while the system's in place. What you want to monitor and what is an issue within this county as a whole is the disproportionality. This is where the SIM process comes in. The state is involved in this process. They monitor this when districts get to certain levels, and within our SELPA, we have four districts that are dealing with this. What I would tell you is when these numbers went in place and we knew this system was coming down the line, the state predictions that I was hearing at the SELPA and discussions with the C D E was that we expected five to seven years out, that 80% of the districts could be potentially found disproportionate in one manner or another. When I say disproportionate, what I mean by that is when your, what your student population is in regards to ethnicity, in regards to free and reduced lunches, in regards to any demographic area that we can break down, special education should not, students in special education should not be higher in any regards. Your special education numbers and the demographics that go with those students should mirror what your overall population is. When we become disproportionate, it's when we start to see certain groups of students or certain disability areas increase in numbers, often in the range of eight to 12% differences. SIM is a good process. It gives us a three to four-year warning. If we don't follow, meet and develop plans to change and alter that path, we will become disproportionate. We don't want that in our districts because the state comes in, you have to follow guidelines that I don't think, that are good, but that can be prevented before we get to that process. And so what your district is dealing with now is meeting on a monthly basis with different groups in the state and developing plans within the district to talk about how to prevent these and what do we do to reverse this from happening. And you're right on target with where you should be. And so again, I don't view that as a negative. It's if we don't follow it or we don't take it seriously, what will be the result of that after.
Okay. So talking about the SIM plan and, and what we're doing and the goals that we're implementing in the special education department for the district is currently we have our monthly meetings with C D E. They're out of Placer County, and so we meet with those. We have a actual SELPA program specialist that meets with us as well. And so they're there to support us in development of our goals and how we're moving towards the compliance, our two goals that we have. And I'll talk about the goals on the next page. We've developed a plan through the state, strength, trying to strengthen our curriculum actually in M T S S. The focus has been a lot around M T S S in regards to building our gen ed supports so that way we can, you know, not overqualify students. So if you look at goal one, we started this back in March of 2022. Our initial overdue I E Ps, those are students that are initially getting qualified for special education or not qualified for special education. We were at 36 overdue I E Ps. Currently, right now, we're at one. I just checked this, this is in October, but I checked it this morning, we're still at one. It's a different student, but we're, it's a live data page, so we're, we're at one. It's a preschooler. Our overdue annual I E Ps went from 235 to 123. And then our overdue triannuals, which is our every year, those went from 138 to 39 currently. The goal is at the end of this year is to get this number down to zero. I think Marianne had mentioned that. And so we're working hard. Wendy, who, Manuel, who is our SACE technician, myself, our assistant director, we're sending out emails to school, you know, our case managers, we're working with our program specialists to work with them for, you know, a lot of our newer teachers to work on getting these I E Ps in compliance. Yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So how often is that, how often are those numbers monitored? So for example, if a person transitions out of the district, does that still reflect as a, as sort of a, an overdue trian, triannual or annual I E P?
Yeah. So we have, so SACE is a live dashboard that you look at every day. I look at it every day. And if a student moves out of a district, those districts usually request those records, and then we release those records. So it could take a day or two. And then the vice versa. Sometimes we get students that have very overdue I E Ps, and then we have to handle that from there in as well.
Well, and I can tell you that our office monitors this on a weekly basis. That's part of what we do to support. And where this becomes more of a concern for your district and some of the issues we've discussed is it's not when students are leaving, it's when students are coming in. So quite often, students come in, we're actually in a very mobile area where districts, students go between four or five of our districts fairly frequently. And what we, and sometimes before starting the new district, there is a delay before they start. And if they're a student with an I E P, what we often see is that when they move into your district, their I E Ps have often been late or not addressed over a 60 to 90-day period sometimes. And that also is a reason for why your numbers are part of what they are.
And so clarifying question on that point, if a person comes from a district and that district had a delay for that I E P, would that, would that delay count towards this total?
Yes. The day a student starts with you, if they have an I E P and it's already late, it's now your late I E P. Yeah.
So many of our teachers have inherited those, so we try to work and, and help through that. So moving on to goal number two, that is really the overall discussion about talking about over identification of students. But what we're doing is providing staff training for different disabilities. We work really closely with our psychologists in regards to the disabilities, along with providing updated training of what they may need, just in regards to disabilities in general. We have a high percentage of students who are qualifying for, under O H I, which is other health impairment, just due to a lot of the trauma and things that are going on in, in some of their lives. But then we also have some of our challenges just in regards to the different assessments and things that are out that we work with our school psychologists in regards to the different assessments that are up and coming, that we can better help monitor to provide some support or look at deeper level of the needs for students. So we do receive staff training, SELPA has provided. They have a long list of training that they provide to not only our special education teachers on all levels, our S D C or mild moderate teachers, our S D C teachers that are moderate severe as well, along with our program specialists. And so there is a great amount of support through SELPA that they have. In addition to our program specialists, we have a program specialist this year that we're primarily working with our new teachers to provide that extra support because, you know, special education is, is difficult. You're running I E Ps, you're learning a new program, you have timelines, and there's a multitude of services that sometimes are connected with students. And so just working and help facilitating I E Ps, so, you know, and just, and just working in general with, with parents and, and facilitation. So, and then in addition to that, we, I, we're currently, Ms. Beback and myself are currently working with school site administrators. So we work closely with Jason Larson and also Lindsay Wisely, or Dr. Wisely, no, she's here, she's not here. But we work with both of them in regards to working with their school, their site principals. So we attend their P L C meetings or just walk around meetings, and I know Ms. Beback's going to get into this a little bit too, but we definitely meet with the elementary, all their, all the principals and vice principals directly individually to go over so they can actually look at their SACE dashboard for their own individual school and know what's out of compliance and how to look at that, in addition to what additional support that they may need at their school sites. I'm, I'm sure, and you know, the, the behavioral challenges have, have increased significantly. And so we're working a lot with the school sites and just in general of how do we provide that additional support in addition to the B C B As that we have? And I think I got into that a little bit. We also meet with our schools, school psychologists, our occupational therapists, and our speech and language pathologists. We meet with them once a month to really discuss the same things, the increase of numbers or the decrease in numbers. Do we talk about assessments of just remaining in compliance and looking at their actual caseloads specifically? Additional activities and updates that we're doing is that one of the goals that I was working with C D E is in regards to a special education handbook, is that there is one that was existed a few years ago that was circulating around. I know we have one of our teachers, Ms. Markort, who's an amazing teacher, she has developed a, an amazing special ed handbook, but we also are utilizing our Microsoft Teams to have everything electronic for our special education teachers to be able to access and to pull from right away, whether it be a template for an I E P, how to facilitate I E Ps, different supports that we may have. So we are in development of that. That is almost complete. I talked about our program specialists providing support to our newer developing case managers. I have bi-weekly meetings with all the program specialists to talk about everything that we discussed at SELPA and moving over to them as far as what we need to do and how we need to help support our school sites, our teachers, our principals, all staff members, our instructional assistants, just trying to work, you know, together and, and collaborate, to be honest. And then we have the opportunity of having a SELPA program specialist with us in our office two days a week to help support, and she really works on monitoring and helping with the compliance, kind of what we were talking about, the overdue I E Ps. But she also works with a program specialist, they're right next to us in our office in regards to working with the case managers and going over and assisting with them, sitting down with them, showing them how to go through each individual I E P and provide that additional support. And as of last week, the assessment plans overall are down 80 from they were last year at this exact time. So we've made some improvement. And I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Beback, who's going to be talking about our education services and our goals through, through that.
Good evening. So continuing on in our presentation, we want to focus on some of the work Kelly was referring to that we're doing through our work on the educational services leadership team with, with Associate Superintendent Ibarra. This year, we, we agreed as a team, as a leadership team to, to focus on, on ways to reduce the disproportionality because quite frankly, special education is, is not an intervention. It's, it's support and specialized academic instruction for students with disabilities. Interventions are what really need to happen in general education. And that's what we do to help keep those students thriving and making progress. So we developed a goal, and I'm going to actually, for the most part, I will not be reading these slides to you, but I'm going to read the goal to you because it's powerful. We decided collectively as an ed services team that if we improve our systems of support for students who are struggling, we will reduce the percentage of general education students across the district who are referred for special education. And so what we are doing to put that in play is to build our multi-tiered systems of support, the M T S S process, to make it more robust, to help people understand that process better. In some, we started working with the school sites individually, both at elementary and secondary sites last year. And when we met with them, they, they very earnestly talked about what they were doing to support students. But when, when we asked, well, what interventions are you actually utilizing and implementing? They admitted they didn't really know beyond just their regular kind of, you know, skill set, what was available. And so that really led to us working more closely with the site administration to help everybody understand what that looks like. So, so in general, we have care teams, we have the M T S S process, we have training around student behavior supports. And then this year, the entire educational services department leadership team visits elementary and secondary sites two to three times a month during our weekly leadership meetings. And during that time, it gives the site administrators an opportunity to talk with us about the issues they're facing at their sites. There are things that are unique to each site, there are things that are the same. And so we're all hearing that together, and it helps us develop more rigorous interventions and supports for our, our sites and for those, the students in those sites. So it also allows us to become more accessible, you know, after, after the distance learning closures and, and then people's reluctance to kind of do things in person for the last two, three years. Having, being able to be there in person, face to face, seeing the students, seeing the classrooms, has really allowed us to see more what's happening or what's not happening, as well as to make us more accessible to the site administrators as well as the, the staff. So that's been a really, really significant part of our process because then when we go in to do these regular check-ins with the elementary P L Cs and the secondary P L Cs, we have a better sense of what's happening at each of the sites and what the new, and the needs are. So the, the elementary sites meet with Jason Larson individually, with Kelly and sometimes with Kelly and me every four to six weeks. We talk about, we review the SACE dashboard, we talk about the M T S S process and how efficacious it is. We collaborate on needs for, collaborate on needs for certain students, and we actually talk about what kind of materials and programs and specific types of supports they might need. Sometimes that looks like having one of our behaviors come in and do a training at a staff meeting. Sometimes it has, it means a program specialist comes and actually sits with ed specialists and kind of walks them through things. And what we're leading up to, what we're discovering really is that our site administrators also need additional support. When they sit at an I E P team meeting, when they run a school that has students who have special education needs on their site, they need to be aware of what is available in the district and how, how to make sure that those students are receiving free, appropriate public education. And so to do that, Associate Superintendent Ibarra and Kelly and I have been planning a, currently, planning a way to meet with site administrators and provide some training for them as well as for their staff in how to meet those needs. So, yes.
Ask a question on that point?
Of course.
You know, I think, while I think that's amazing, you know, training our administrators around, I'd engage that, my question is sort of the, sort of the inverse of that. Is there, or is there any plan to develop trainings for parents, right? So if I am a parent and I don't necessarily know what services are available or how to articulate them, I may be missing out, or I may feel like I'm walking into an environment that's unintentionally hostile.
So, so there is not yet a plan, but there is a recognition of need. So you know, Velma Wilson, she is. So you know Velma Wilson, she is frequently at our LCAP meetings as our other parents. And last year I attended each one of those LCAP meetings and at every single one, there were parents of students who have disabilities, who had questions, who didn't understand the process, and who really just didn't know where to go for help. And you know, in those situations, so often those parents end up feeling disengaged, they feel disrespected, they feel like they're not being heard. So it really, it really became clear to us that we do need to provide some support to parents. I will be honest that we haven't figured out quite how, how we're going to be doing that other than through the LCAP meetings, but, but that is something on, on our agenda to be developing. Currently, we've put together a newsletter that goes to the, monthly to the staff and to the site administrators. And I, we might do something like that for parents as well.
Just something to think about. You know, I think about my mom, I'm, I'm a first generation college student, my mom graduated high school, but you know, she did graduate, so I am proud of that. But she wasn't necessarily somebody who used education as a tool to navigate life. And as a result, her experience in high school, in K-12 actually, wasn't necessarily positive. And so her going into those school systems and being able to argue for, well, not even argue, but being able to sort of position herself to ask for whatever it is she needed probably wasn't something that she was comfortable with, that's first. Secondly, language matters. And so this is something that I'm sort of also looking at in my day job where if we come up here and I can say some language, you know, I was an EPSDT coordinator for two years, and so I went in and I worked with SELPA and all the, to a vast majority of the community in here, they probably don't know what I'm talking about. So also in addition to that training, also having some language that's kind of vernacular, right? Like we don't want to speak over people's heads because then that also makes people feel some kind of way.
Yeah.
All of those things as well.
And I want to also add, if you don't mind, again, what Sharon mentioned, but also I want to say what the SELPA does and where some of your parents have been involved, but it does need to be accessed more, is Velma is a part of the CAC. We have a commu, a parent group, this is mandated by the state, and I don't think, not just your district, but SELPA-wide, it is not accessed enough. What we know is if parents don't understand the process, and I don't mean at the high school level or the middle school level, it has to be whenever they come into this system and qualify for an IEP. We need to be prepared and we need to better prepare not just our administrators, but our parents, preschool on up, of what an IEP is and the process. Because when I started this, in this field about 30 years ago, maybe even a little longer, I used to not have gray hair either. It is all gone now. When I started, I used to say that, again, parents underst, what was taught to me was parents understood the process. And when students came in with an IEP, they would be out with an IEP in two to three years. There are some students that will always need our special education services. That's a good thing. We do quality work, we are here to support them, and we need to provide, I would say, more. We can't help the students if the parents don't understand the system. And if the parents don't understand the system, when students now qualify for special education, I would tell you, they don't leave in two to three years. They are in the system for 20 years. And I say that because if we don't address that directly, we are giving false information to parents and we need to look at the data and address that directly. Again, I do think there are some systems in place to reach parents, but we need to better work with you and your district on how to reach the parents and at their level, whether it's coming to the school sites, whether it's doing things virtually, in person, different language issues. We have to come to them at their level, deal with it directly, because if you don't do that, again, your numbers are going to continue to increase and we're not really going to be able to support the child if the parent doesn't know how to support the child and understand. There is nothing more confusing in the education system than understanding an IEP. And the SELPA is there to help and support, but really, if your district administrators, your district teachers, your district sites don't have a plan to deal with it, and this is regionally, you're not going to be able to help the students in the big picture.
And quite frankly, you know, one of the things that we reinforce, you know, at every IEP team meeting, we, we offer a copy of the parent's procedural safeguards. And just mean, one of the things that is important to convey with that is that the parent is their child's voice, they are their advocate until they can advocate for themselves. And it is our way of saying, we want you to be part of this team. So I think that we are doing a lot toward that because legally, quite frankly, we really only need to offer it yearly. But we offered it every single meeting with every single prior written notice or letter that we send to parents, we provide them with a copy of the procedural safeguards in their, their language, their, their native language or preferred language. But we need to empower them further so that they know what they can ask for and how they can, how they can work in collaboration with us. So part of our work so far, and this is, you know, this is a process, but part of our work so far is to empower our staff to better understand and have tools to work with the students and to work with those parents, to understand how to talk with them and how to share and explain information. Because special education is not only replete with, with acronyms that most people don't understand, but it is confusing even to those people who know what those acronyms, acronyms stand for. So we really want to, we don't ever want to have any professional in our district have to be talking about something that they don't understand. Because if they don't, the parents are never going to trust them. They're just not. They're going to be like your mom, Clyde, you know, and they're going to feel like, you know what, I am kind of disenfranchised here, I'm not part of this system. They are not speaking my language and I don't know what they are saying. So it's really important to us that they are part of that and that we are working collaboratively with them. So our first step is, is really building, building our sites capacity to help them support the students. Parents who, and guardians who have students who are making progress tend to be a lot more receptive to you telling them about, you know, these are some ways that we could work together, you know, and sharing those ideas with them. So we are working on things about like community, building circles, healing oriented and, you know, trauma-informed practices, care team processes, helping them better understand pre-referral strategies and giving them resources to turn to in addition to us. That's, I, I spend a lot of my time each day speaking with principals and with staff, helping them resolve issues when they do have parents who are concerned about what's happening with their children. So those are kind of the, the gist of the meetings that we're having and, and our plan to, to go forward. I know you've, you've been able to ask some questions already, but we did leave some time here at the end if you have additional questions for me or, you know, me or Kelly.
Okay. So first of all, I want to thank all of you for that very informative presentation. I typically wait until the end and ask questions, but I know sometimes the, the conversation as it's happening is probably more apropos to get those questions resolved. So we'll start down with Trustee Rocha.
Oh, thank you.
Or you, unless you want me to come back to you.
I just, no, I'll come back. I'm aware of the special ed, but it's confusing to me, even though I've been involved with it as a parent.
That's a good point.
And even in those days, the issue was parent education. Because we go in there scared as can be and not know how to deal with our child because we're listening to you and trusting you to give us the right information and we don't know if we should take that information as the truth.
And I, I think, Trustee Rocha, that, you know, that is, that is one of the biggest challenges in special education because, you know, when, when a parent doesn't feel like they, they know how to handle their child, it is a very, very frightening feeling for them. So I think that it's a bit, that's a big part of the reason why we want to make sure that we are reaching out to them. You know, right now, for the last few years, we and pretty much every district has, have been focused on compliance and making sure that our IEPs, you know, dot all the i's, cross all the t's. And we have to do that. But unfortunately, sometimes that makes us have to like, okay, we're mechanically going through the agenda and it doesn't always feel for a parent, I think, like, okay, we can just sit and talk about this. You know, Kelly was just mentioning to me, you know, recently about how when we used to write IEPs by hand, you know, we had far more in-depth conversations.
See, and for me, it would be, I'm sorry, but I want to just take this little piece. For me, it would be great if you could have in every site, a little group that would meet. And I'm thinking of a Spanish-speaking parent, because they're not only dealing with the issue of their child, they're dealing with the home, which where the parents, other partner might not agree with what's going on and take the blame. The mother then takes the blame for everything. So you have to have the socially emotional piece tied to a school site where the parent can come and, and discuss it.
Well, and what I'd like to say is when an IEP is done correctly, there are no new surprises in that meeting. And if that happens, it's because you've had discussions before you get there. And when you get to that IEP meeting, it's a discussion, it's a conversation. It shouldn't be a formalized meeting and we're rushing through things or trying to get things done. When that happens, I don't think we have, and it's not that people aren't trying to do it, but we haven't done enough conversations before that meeting. We fail the parents if we don't do that.
But that parent needs support.
Yes.
And so even though you do the IEP, they go through the process, they're still having to deal with things at home.
Yes.
And they need the support with other parents so they could discuss it.
Yes, and before that meeting and after. Because if you're not supporting them, again, we're not supporting the students, no matter what we do.
By the way, Carol Lehman was the first one here in school district for special ed. And the highest number was wheelchair.
Yeah.
I was telling you.
I'm going to request a two-minute recess for a quick bio break. My apologies. We'll come right back.
Okay.
So we will return back to our meeting. So Maya, if you don't mind, establishing quorum. Maya? Oh, if you don't mind. Re-establishing quorum.
Yes.
Yeah.
Trustee Hack?
I'm still here.
And Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
Vice President Lathan?
Here.
President Lewis?
Here. So what we're going to do is take a little bit of a, sort of a detour and ask the, for public comments, and then we'll have the rest of the board follow-up with questions. So first is Amanda Freitas.
Good evening. I do appreciate the presentation tonight. I still do have a lot of concerns about our sped department. It seems like our current sped goals are preventing students from getting the services they need. They referenced that we're down 80 assessment plans from this time last year, but we're denying families' assessments. I know at my school site specifically, parents have put in writing requesting for testing at the, a lot of them, the recommendation by their pediatrician, and we're either telling them, no, you have to do CARES, SST, SST, and then maybe we'll assess, or we're just ignoring them in general, which I know is not legal. The process to help identify students is long and lengthy, and parts of the process involve people who don't even know our students. CARES team, it's our vice principal and a couple other people at school, who don't necessarily know who my student is. I don't know how they're making decisions on what should be best for them if they don't actually know the student. It's also been really hard to refer students for speech services. At least at my site, teachers have been asked to identify which sounds the student is having difficulty with, and then been asked to provide interventions prior to getting assessed for speech. Us as teachers, we are not professionals with speech. We don't know how to identify what they're having issues with, nor do we know how to give them interventions, nor do we have time in our classroom with 26 students to pull one student aside to give them help with speech before they can be referred to for services. It seems like many times, the sped representative at an IEP team is unfamiliar with the student. And it seems like they have already made their decision regarding services for the student before the meeting even begins and do not take into account input from the teacher or parent. And just as a side note, I was very confused as a parent, as a, of a student who has an IEP, that an IEP is not a formalized meeting. I've never heard that before, I'm very confused. If the goal is to keep students out of special ed, education, then we need to offer more supports, like smaller class sizes and instructional aids. I teach fourth grade, I currently have 26, I can have a maximum of 30. My students' abilities range from kindergarten till like eighth grade. It is very difficult for me as one person with 26 students who have different behavioral issues as well to meet their needs. And also, the process for all families isn't the same. My son, I haven't had that difficult of a time, I know that I've come in and talked about some things, but my process for him has not been the same as some of his classmates who also desperately need services so that they can be successful in their classrooms. My son was originally identified for speech, I called when he was three years old to the district office. They offered me a full screening for everything. My only concern was speech, but they offered me everything. Last year, we worked really hard, he had a lot of issues. Nobody tried to talk me out of services that I wanted for my son. When I said that he needed a one-on-one aid, nobody said, oh, you don't want a one-on-one aid, that's, that's too restrictive. But we have other students in his class that are asking for the same thing, and those parents are talked out of what they go into the meeting asking for, and I just think that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, thank you for that, that comment. Next is Amber Dagan.
Hello. So I wanted to come up and talk about a couple of things that I heard that So I wanted to come up and talk about a couple of things that I heard that are concerning for me. Once again, my last comment about my attempt at getting the student the services that he need, the parent asked for services and was talked out of them by people who made it sound like they were, had their best, his best interests at heart, but he needs those services. You know, I know that the parent was feeling very upset at some points, too. I, just speaking as my own experience with that. One of the other things that I wanted to say is, again, it feels very much like when I walk into that meeting, it's not a team, it's a dictatorship. I'm told what's going to happen. What I say does not matter at all. My data does not matter at all. What anybody says, other than the person that's leading it, says, it matters not at all. So the fact that it's supposed to be a discussion and a collaboration, that doesn't feel like that's happening at all, at least in my personal experience. I've been routinely told, I don't want to see your data. I don't want to hear what you have to say. I don't want to hear what is going on, you know? Or I've been told, you've spoken too much, you, I don't want to hear any more of your data, even though I pride myself on having a lot of it. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is that if students qualify for these services, doesn't that mean that they need them? So why, so saying that they're over-identified, I'm a little confused about that. Are you saying that these students don't need the services and are receiving services they're not qualified for? I feel like if they qualify for the services, that, to me, presents the fact that they need them, right? In order to be successful. Also, another thing that I am really worried about is the fact that we're saying, oh, we've, we're identified students. The solution to that shouldn't be, we're not going to give any more services to anybody ever, period. And that's really what it kind of feels like is happening right now. I have some suggestions. If you want to help gen ed teachers be more effective in the classroom, so that we can help students not enter into special ed services, one of them being smaller class sizes, instructional aids in the classroom. And dyslexia is a huge, huge problem. I can think of three students off the top of my head currently right now going to my school, who I suspected had dyslexia, but there was nobody to help them with that. And interventions that are specific to the needs of students with dyslexia would be incredibly helpful. We're talking about a population where 15% to 20% of our general population is probably going to have dyslexia. Wouldn't that mean that it's also reflected in our student population as well, that 15% to 20% of them might also possess that? So let's get services around dyslexia and help reach those students so we can keep them out of sped. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So next is Laura Bullitt.
Okay, I'm actually going to speak a little bit different than what I had actually come in to talk about. I am a TK teacher, and also I've been a K teacher. Students, it seems, right now, that the students that are coming in to the school system, we're not even paying attention to. And one of the students that Amber has started in K last year, and that teacher fought really hard to get services for her young student, and he's gone through so many different meetings and has been denied. And I feel that the younger that they're identified, the better outcomes are going to be for them, because we can help them at the beginning. Last year, I had a little guy, it took until April to get services for him. They weren't even considering him for services until something drastic happened. And why do we have to wait until something drastic happens to help these young ones? And the young one that I have this year, it seems like every year I have at least one. And in the past, they seem to be able to get the services. So now that the district, and I understand the challenges at the district, but does that mean that them coming into the school system now, they're not going to get services because we have too many other kids that need services too? I pulled a article from Education Weekly, and they were, they've been reporting on special ed. In fact, the Passage of Education for All Handicapped Children Act, which was back in 1976, they started with about 8% of students across the nation needing special ed services. And that, well, as of '21, '22, it went up to 14.7%. And I read also that New York is at 20%. And California, if you look on the map of all other states that have special ed students, we're kind of in the middle. And our district is a little bit higher. Across the nation, it's about 15.5% right now. But we cannot just say, no, you can't have services because we don't have room for you. And a four and five-year-old, if we can catch them right now, that is the best for them because they learn what they need to learn. My grandson, who needed a one-on-one aid last year, if you saw him last year in kindergarten, coming into kindergarten to first grade this year, you would not think it was the same child because he got the services that he needed. So I am so hopeful that he is going to be able to be very successful in school, where when he was three and four, I was really worried. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next up is Dr. Kimberly Payton.
Good evening. I just had a quick, a few questions. Thank you. The first one, Dr. Kimberly Payton, I'm a resident of the county, and I'm the vice president of the NAACP. My questions today just have to do with the concerning of, when you say that you want to reduce the disproportionate and over-identification of students in special education, how does that affect those overdue IEPs and the triennial IEPs? What is the connection to that? And the other thing I was wondering about is the assessment plans that you want to take down from 80. I admire your goal, but also, how does that affect those plans? I heard a lot of mention today about behaviors. As an instructor who teaches teachers about the IEP and how to incorporate that into your lesson plan, I'm just a little bit confused. Behaviors are the basis for all the assessments that are used to create IEPs. And behaviors are what drives students' responses on those assessments. So is that a factor? Did you mean to present that that way? Because it's a little bit confusing to other people in the audience who really don't understand how assessments work in terms of IEP. And finally, I just want to speak to the piece about sensitivity and cultural awareness. So as a whole, minorities, especially African-Americans, are scared of IEPs. They're scared of special education. They don't know what that means when you approach them with that. And depending on any parent's level of education, when they're just approached with your child needs help, they do need more resources besides in an IEP meeting when you first get there, and they give you your procedural safeguards on your rights. That's not enough. They really do need either an advocate or somebody to explain what the process is, why they've been identified, what behaviors might be triggering it, and the benefit of getting support. Because otherwise, it's just another scary process. And going back to the civil rights movement, it starts to mimic racial disparity and discrimination. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Next, Velma Wilson.
Good evening again, and you know, thank you to Mary Ann and to Sharon for just doing an amazing presentation. It's funny, because I was just having that conversation just a week ago with Kelly. And here we go, popped up and we're doing this presentation. You know, and as a parent from, as a student that went through special ed and was diagnosed at the age of three, yes, I do agree, we need to start looking and testing our students a lot earlier. But he's graduated high school, he's about to graduate college in a year. So when you get involved, for you parents, those that are listening and those that are in the community, and you have parent, you have a student that is in special ed, don't let it be scary. We are actively, and Kelly and I have been talking deeply about, how do we plan a sped 101 parent meeting to where we can break down what is special ed and really what is not? And you heard some of the demographic, and some of it sound very daunting when we look at Antioch, being the rise and the influx of so many of our foster, and we forgot, we didn't even mention the unhoused youth. It's a very, very, very scary sight and very sad, when I know that I'm there in those school sites and I'm seeing these children, we trying to educate, and they going through all kinds of stuff, all kinds, that some of us adults would never be even be able to deal with. And you teachers have the task of trying to educate them through it all. So I think once we can get this parent meeting up and running, so where we can actually give you some really good insight on what is special ed? What is a 504? What is an IEP? What does all these acronyms mean? So you understand why, when sometimes you heard that, no, they don't need, meet these requirements, you don't take it as a no, you take it as, okay, let me find another way around to get to educating our students. Because guess what? Parent involvement and engagement will always equal student success. And my children, my son, Jesse, is a prime example of that.
Okay. So thank you for that. We will now return. So if you could return to the podium, because I'm assuming there'll be questions for all of the presenters. Trustee Dr. Jack?
Hi, thank you for the presentation and for explaining the state of the nation, the state of the state, and the state of Antioch Unified School District. I have a particular love for students with disabilities. My first teaching assignment in Los Angeles, I was a mild-to-moderate special day class teacher, and as a principal, really did some transformative work with my staff. So this is near and dear to my heart. I have way too many things to say, talk about, question, so I'm not going to ask them all. What I do suggest, however, and is for us to think about, I know the board, we don't have very many committees, maybe we have one, is to think about this as one as well. If not now, then plan at least for next school year, I think is really important, because otherwise, we'll be up here all day asking questions. And I think it needs to have a lot of attention. I understand that there's challenges across the state with an increase in numbers, and I believe with all of my heart that we can be a model. Hence, that's why we're doing equity audits, things like that, so that we can actually shift the narrative and think differently about how we serve students with disabilities. One thing I know I've been thinking about, and as I walk schools and talk to principals, is, for example, the structure, right? I've talked to some principals and asked about sped, and they're like, oh, that's the sped department versus these are our kids, right? And so, but I wonder about the structure, because we might have a structure that allows that to happen if, for example, the principals aren't directly supervising the ed specialists. If someone is always coming from the district to lead IEP meetings, that's a disconnect, and then we're not humanizing the experience for our students and our families. And so that's just something that I'm thinking about. How can we give more support and power to principals so they actually are the folks who are on the ground? As a former principal, I couldn't imagine saying, let me call the district office. I knew every kid, I knew every IEP, right? It's like, I knew the family, I knew what they needed, I was at every IEP meeting. And so I really, if we can start thinking about like the overall structure and system and how we can shift it, and what are, where are the models? When I was a principal in Emeryville, I remember, we went to Alameda Unified because they had such a powerful program. And so I took teachers and parents, and you know, we went to go look, like, what does their inclusion program look like so that we can model something? So where are there models of excellence for special education that we can take our staff to, to visit? Or we may have some here, right? And so how can we do that? And instructional leadership is big. And I heard, and I love what you talked about in terms of what's actually happening in the gen ed classroom, starting in TK, right? And what supports our gen ed teachers getting, our gen ed teachers and education specialists, those are our special ed teachers, are they collaborating? Ed specialists have so much to offer. Like this program that I went to to get my ed specialist credential, and when I, you know, taught gen ed, it was different. And I was like, oh, every gen ed teacher should know this. They should know how to make accommodations and modifications, how to differentiate. That's what you learn in sped programs. So if it's not happening in the teacher prep programs, like, you know, fortunately, the, you know, speaker said that she teaches it, but in most credential programs, that it's not taught, how do we do it here? How do we create something so that our gen ed teachers and our ed specialists actually are collaborating and learning from each other, so that kids aren't needing to have special services, right? So I understand that if you need it, you need it, but a lot of times, it's the first good instruction that's not happening in the classrooms. And so how do we shift that? And I'm gonna go back to, oh, and another thing, I like what you said about the meetings for parents, because someone mentioned, like, we don't have a solution yet. I think that's what, you know, good collaboration will bring about solutions. But we have, you know, center, we have a center for newcomers. What about a center for, like a designated place, not necessarily at a site, but at the district office, or somewhere neutral, where any parent can come to learn about and talk about the needs? Where it has different activities that parents can learn how to work with their students with disabilities? We have an increase of students, of people who are being identified as, you know, being autistic. What does that mean? What does that look like? Where can they go to learn about that? And so just really hoping that this is an opportunity that we can take to think outside the box. And I know that there's a compliance issue, because that's what CDE cares about, compliance. I'm talking about how do we humanize this for people? We'll meet the compliance when we do that. Like, that will hit it out the box. And so I think we can be creative in our thoughts and really wrap our head around, and our ideas around, how do we do something different? And it might not look like the neighboring districts, because we don't look like the neighboring districts. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for those comments. Next, Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have a good chunk of questions, some of which were kind of addressed, but I'll ask them more directly. Do we receive any kind of increased funds to deal with the increased needs, such as the increased number of like group homes that exist here in the Antioch area?
The short answer to that is no. The state does have different funding areas where this, where when you have more group homes, or you have larger groups of certain issues dealing with, that funding comes. But overall, it doesn't come close to equating. And I can't say, and I think your CBO would agree, it, not only does it not equate, it has decreased over the years. And what we are, what you are provided for in regards to funding from the state and federal level, does not, what has been promised through IDEA, the Individuals Disabilities Educational Act, where originally, and they continue to, say they will guarantee a certain amount of funding, does not exist. When this was originally developed, it was expected that at some point, we would get close to 50%. Not only maybe at the height of my career over the last 30 years, I would tell you, we are, at the most, particularly when you involve preschool funding, which is not included in all the numbers, you are lucky to get maybe 3% to 5% at the most. And that is, again, decreasing, as the needs of the students are increasing. So it doesn't come close.
Yeah. And do we know why, or have an idea of why we have so many group homes here in Antioch in particular?
No, go for it. My, my guess would be because we have larger homes, and we also have more affordable housing than surrounding communities in the county.
Got it. Got it. So you're saying that there are likely maybe homeowners that are renting and profiting off of supporting and creating these group homes?
Group homes, there's two parts of what she said. Group homes usually serve six to 10 students in a home. So that involves a certain amount of rooms. And depending on the needs of the students going in or the age, they can sometimes share or they have to have their own rooms. So you're dealing with that factor. And the rental, you, when, when I look at it, I look at the areas where these homes are increasing and what are the rental costs? What are the, some people rent, some people loan. And so you need to take that into consideration.
Got it.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On that point. So can we, can you differentiate between, because again, so group homes is sort of a catch-all. It's actually not common vernacular now because there are different labels for different populations of people. So can you give a quick breakdown? So for example, you have an ARF, an adult residential facility versus sort of a transitional house for young people versus, you know, a CSU or something like that? Can you just give a quick?
Yeah. So when I, when we say group homes, what we mean is that, well, first, the main, when we're talking about it in a public education, I am looking at it for students anywhere from infants up to the age of 22, who have not been able to be supported at their homes for multiple reasons. And again, challenges that some of our students deal with require this extra specialized support services. It is a need that exists. But we are looking at, homes are often divided for adults, 18 to 22. We also, and again, these are for a mix of adults and children that deal frequently with developmental disabilities. That is what your area sees the most group homes for. There are also group homes for students that sometimes deal with emotional issues. Or again, students that have, that don't live with their families for a multitude of reasons. And not all of those students are in special ed. You can go into these group homes and there might only be one student that has an IEP. There could be none. There could be others when we're talking about physical or developmental delays where that home specializes with students who happen to all have IEPs. It's a vast array. So it's broken down, not just by disability or need areas, but by ages as well. And again, what people don't always realize is it's not just adults. That's what kind of stands out and what we see more of or understand more of. But we have homes that support students at the age, we no longer see it at the infant and early ages as much as we used to. But definitely, I would tell you from about eight, the age of eight up through high school students.
Got it. Thank you. Sounds like there's ways we can continue to create better supports for that.
Yeah.
Can you share a little bit about why you think there might be frictions that teachers or parents face in these IEP meetings? I think the presentation was really great at defining the, the structure of special education and these different pieces of how it's framed. But when it comes to the actual meetings and this personal experience, why is that so, or to me feels so different from, you know, all these great structures we have in place?
When you have an IEP meeting, you have a parent who is there, sometimes by themselves, maybe another friend or another parent is there. So you might have two individuals who know the student and live with the student. And some of our IEP teams involve specialists where we get up to the number of 10 to 12 people. And no matter how educated, no matter how well you understand the IEP process, when you are only one of maybe one or two people at that meeting and 10 or 12 others are there, even when you have great relationships with everyone at the table, it is intimidating. It's, it's difficult to have an honest conversation. These meetings are often done in one to two hours. Sometimes we come back for part two or part three meetings.
Yeah.
But it's a very stressful situation. You think everything relies on this meeting. And when, when that approach is done, I think, again, you're not having that conversation with the parent. You're really not looking at what the needs of the students are at home. And you're isolating what's happening in that setting only. And it becomes too challenging.
There's lots of paperwork, lots of assessments that go to the parent. And so, and they could be quite lengthy, maybe, you know, 30 pages, some of them each. And so going through each of the assessments becomes overwhelming for the parents as well as to what this really means, you know, where they may have a processing, you know, disorder, where, where the behavioral challenges come in and what assessments are being used. And so by the time you get through some of the reports and get through them, you know, like Marianne saying, you're on like meeting one, two, and three, then it's, it becomes an overwhelming, like what are they qualifying for, what additional services they're, they're receiving. And so it's a team approach where everyone talks about it. But overall, it's especially for initial IEP meetings for students who are just qualifying.
What opportunities are there for parents or, and teachers to maybe get involved in the way that we do these processes? It sounds like there's opportunities to maybe think about, can we change the way we do IEPs? Can we reimagine the way that these things happen? And where can the people that are facing the most frictions with this process also share some of the feedback so we can, you know, continue to refine those experiences? Is there opportunities or places that people can go to share about their experiences?
Well, I can say for the SELPA, we provide over 200 trainings to staff and parents through the commu, the parent group, through the SELPA, the CAC. There are six to 10 trainings a year that are done. And again, I think when, what districts should consider is some of what has been mentioned here. I think the more you can develop a parent group within a district, the more anything can be done at a district so that it's, you understand your families best. We provide supports at the SELPA, but the more you can develop district-wide and site-wide supports for those families, the better you'll be able to reach and support those students.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, because it's like a two-sided problem, right? In one sense, you can train parents better to understand the current process. But I'm asking about, do there exist processes so that parents and teachers can train, you know, you all and everyone else to improve these processes from the other direction as well? Because I think there should be a, a two-way communication of that to help improve processes.
I think there's been a lot of great suggestions tonight as far as like coming up with a task force or a, or a team to, to start that development and those conversations to, you know, how are we going to do some outreach to the community and to the parents in regards to special education? We've, we've talked briefly about this and, you know, in the past and, you know, possibly bringing it to some of our, our other meetings that we do in the evening so that way everyone has the opportunity to come. I think it's a matter, it's not just, you know, one person deciding, it's, it's getting multiple people in a room and, and talking about how we can, you know, get the outreach out so that way we can offer those services and provide some knowledge to, to parents in general. Yeah.
I've been, I've been waiting.
I just had to ask that last one, but it's a good time.
Yeah, thank you. So it sounds like you're talking about in terms of process, process is so important in how people experience process is important. And often, folks don't know this, but like processes, the way a process goes can determine whether or not something is racist or not, homophobic or not, gender, you know, like there's all these things that are happening in it. And so my suggestion would be, like, we need to really think about a culture shift, right? Because that's what trustee Hernandez is basically, I think, what I'm hearing from him is that, right? Like, how do we, because a parent should not, while there, I've been in IEP meetings as a parent, right? And I've been in some as a principal and as a teacher. And the ones that are really well done are when we know the parents, we know the students, we don't come in with preconceived notions, we give them an opportunity to speak, the picture of the kid is there. Like we're, we are humanizing this experience for people. And what I'm hearing is compliance, compliance, compliance. Compliance is important, but you'll meet the compliance when, when we first look at the human side of it. Like what is it that people are experiencing when they're in these meetings? We have teachers saying, like what we're saying, they don't feel, right? Like what we're presenting is not what's actually happening. It's, it's the ideal state. And I think that's where we're trying to get to is the ideal state. And how do we shift the culture in between time? And this is not a, I got you, this is not a pointing our fingers at you. It is literally like, this isn't, we have an opportunity. How do we take that opportunity and turn it into something where people feel safe and not afraid? And maybe three days of an IEP is too long. Like that is, I've never been in a three-day IEP or a three, you know, like that's a long time. And so how do we make this so that people feel comfortable and so that they know? And I know this is a hard job. Please know, I know that, right? And this is such a great opportunity for us to actually start making those shifts to, so that we can make it so that people leave and they feel like, they got me. They, the district is an advocate for me too. And right now, I'm not hearing that. What I'm hearing is this adversarial from parents, like they're, they're here and we're here versus we're working together to make sure our, my kid has the best possible supports.
Yeah. And add it to that, sort of a nuance. And so I won't mention what county, but I work for a county in my day job. And one of the things we're looking at is Medi-Cal penetration rate. And so one of the things we're looking at specifically for API populations to receive mental health services. Again, this is not a, you know, it's not a phenomenon that's unfamiliar with anybody. It's true of most districts. And what we're starting to understand is it's less about the services available and our approach. There's, there's a cultural element that may preclude somebody from seeking services. And so I can speak as an African-American male. In the black community, the likelihood of us going to see a therapist or a psychologist or being comfortable with our kid being in SPED is a, it's a barrier even before we get to the meeting. And so having some way to have that conversation to resolve that could play a big part. So I don't know that there's an answer to that tonight, but I think that's something we definitely need to consider.
And also to say that it's a historical reason.
Yeah, yes. There's historical reasons, yes. Yeah.
So if I may.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. If I may, I think that, just to kind of touch on that, part of the, part of the, the need to be compliant and to provide intervention supports at the school sites through general education is predicated in that, that desire to form those relationships, to provide those supports for, for students. Because part of the reality is that we have so many students being assessed that it makes it difficult sometimes for staff to, you know, to humanize the, the IEP experience, whether those students are going to be eligible for services or not. And so if we, if we minimize the number of students who are, who need to be assessed by meeting their needs through general education, then we build those, we build that trust because the families can see their, their students getting help at the school sites and, and making progress, you know, doing better. And so, so there, that is kind of tied into our efforts to, to create these processes. But as I said before, it is, it is a process. But we feel very positive about it because then, so far, it's small, but so far, we've had some really great success in, in doing that this year.
Yeah. So continuing on, like, how do we make sure that we're not overlooking a child in the process of reducing over identification?
You have to have the conversations with the families. You can't assume anything going in. And you have to know who your population is and you have to work with them at their, at their level, whatever that is. If you're not doing that, again, you're going to continue to overqualify and really not solve the issue. And you also have to understand what we're dealing with. And by that, I mean not, we, we as a community, we as a district, you really want to look at, again, what we have seen and what the trends are is trauma. Trauma's a big thing that has increased that we haven't clearly defined and that's going to continue. But how trauma impacts different groups of people is significantly different. And you can't come up with one solution for any of this. And then I would say, again, you need to look at it, starting in general education, because some of what you have said is very significant. Our students in special education, and I can say that because my job is 100% special education. I am at, again, an organization that supports, consults, and helps train the districts within our SELPA. If I were sitting in your district, in any district, you can't look at it that way. You have to know your populations, what the issues are, and how is it different for each of the groups of people that you are serving? It is different not just based on ethnicity, but on sex and based on age. And it is significantly different at each of those levels. And if you come in with one answer for everything, we're going to fail the students. You've got to look at it overall. And again, work with the partnerships. And a lot of what you've discussed here, I think, is incredibly positive. And you have the means to deal with it. Partner with your parent groups. Bring them in and find the solutions with them. If we do it in isolation, you're not, no matter who you are, where you are in this state and this nation, you're not going to solve the issues at hand.
Do we have simplified language for talking about this particular, you know, goal? Because I think when people hear over qualification, under qualification, over identification, it's just, it sounds like, yeah, like we're going to miss kids here and there. And I think that's why it frames the conversation around that. So has there been discussions on creating a better way to communicate that message?
Probably not enough. And I will take that as probably one of the big things that I need to help not just your district with, but regionally. And I will own that. But I also think what I want to stress here in hearing maybe some of the, what I have even said, but all of us together as a, as the three of us presenting to you tonight, there are separate things. We presented the compliance for the purpose of, that is what the CDE is looking at. And you can't separate that out or ignore it. But that is not the reasons or the issues you are dealing with here in Antioch. Again, and I don't think your district is riding on compliance in any way. In fact, I would say I know that. But compliance is what the CDE does. There are some positives and some negatives to that. But what you want to get to is, when you're looking at over qualification of students or that number getting to 20%, why? And the reason why is important because you don't want that number to increase because then we're not serving the students at that early intervention stage, at that beginning stage. And again, you want to concentrate and develop that in a media way. But I will take simplifying the language, providing it to the different language groups and seeing how we can do that as a SELPA, not just for your district, but for the 16 districts we support and represent.
Yeah. Cause I think, you know, I think I'm starting to understand better, you know, the, the reasoning behind that language, right, that we should be having students that are getting supported by general education, supports that exist. I think the problem is that there is some kind of disconnect where these kids are maybe not getting those supports. They're, and then they're trying to get these supports through special education and then they're getting denied there. And then now they're getting neither. And that's like a huge problem. And I think that's kind of at the root of getting to some of these communication challenges there.
Yeah. And I was going to say, this is yet another example of the conversation we're having earlier. If we are in a classroom full of folks who are familiar with the institution of education, some of, some of us have spent expertise and we are having confusion around, you know, the language and how, how it's landing on our ears, imagine a parent who's less familiar with this system, imagine what they are feeling. So this example is kind of what we were talking about earlier around how we message that, how we message to parents, how we engage parents and how we relay that information. So.
Yeah. What parts of this process engage primary care providers or where do they fit in, in this process?
Yeah. So we, we get a lot of assessment requests from, like, are you talking about like physicians?
Yes.
Yes. So yeah, a lot of the assessment requests are coming from the pediatricians in general. So they will write a letter asking for assessment from the district and then the, they turn it into the school site. So, and then from there, it goes to the special education teacher along with the site principals. And they talk about what interventions or what they've done. They usually will go right to an SST, bring the parent in, discuss with the parent, you know, the, the request. There are some, and there have been a lot. I do want to note this is that we've received some pediatrician requests, but also observations from ourselves that we do move to assessment right away. So that we're not at all holding back assessment because, you know, we want to hold back on compliance. That's not what we're trying to do at all. There are certain circumstances and a lot of students that have moved in, honestly, that have had significant needs, are coming in already nonverbal, they're having severe behavioral concerns. And so we will get an assessment plan out right away just based off observation. So what we'll do is I'll have one of our behaviorists go attend and observe the student or the case manager observe. And sometimes the principals are calling saying, no, this, this student really needs to be assessed. But if it's a student that is receiving, you know, they're at grade level, they're doing well, they may have a, you know, a couple little things and they'll call the parent in and say, hey, we're not really ready for assessment, but let's, let's put a plan in place. And that's through an SST plan. And so once they go through that cycle and the student has not made any progress, say after a six-week cycle, then what they'll do is they'll, you know, again, take a look and see if that student has made progress or not. And that's when we'll bring in a resource teacher or something where we'll talk about a possible assessment. resource teacher or something where we'll talk about a possible assessment plan.
Yeah, and I think that touches on, like, my last general question of, like, how does, how well does the special education process engage with the supports that exist within general education, right? Like, if people are being denied services, how well are we making sure that we're then connecting them to other services, or that they're not kind of left, kind of just figuring out the next steps on their own? That there's kind of always a, like, warm handoff? Is that a thing that happens, or how, how well do those things happen?
No, that's a great question. So, where it initially starts before it moves to an SST is called the care team. So, most of the care teams either have the psychologist or the resource teacher sitting on those care teams, not every school site, but a lot of them do. And they are the ones that provide the, the teacher, the gen ed teacher, the administrator, whoever's on their care team. I don't, we don't set that up, the SPED team doesn't, the school sites do. But there usually is a SPED staff that is sitting on the care team, and also the SST teams, to determine and give some kind of resource, or what accommodations they can provide in a classroom, some help that they can offer, and they write that into the plan to see if that helps the student make any progress or growth.
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, I just want to say that I definitely recognize that this is very tough, very hard work, that doesn't have clear answers. But, you know, as much as I can, you know, push us toward a vision where we have one learning environment where both special education and general education students are basically the same, in that we're not having to use, like, I understand why sometimes we have to use these terms in the way that things are, but in the reality, like, special education students are students, and our general education students are students, and we should be talking about them in the exact same way, because they all need supports, they all need help, they all need an environment to thrive in, and, you know, our special education students have so much to give and contribute to the learning of our other students. And so, the more that we can move to an environment where they're working together in the same learning environment and able to give to each other, I think that's where we'll find some of the best solutions, and where our vision of education, I think, should be going.
I agree.
Trustee Hack?
Um, yeah, just real quick. I, I walked into John Sutter Elementary 55 years ago, and it's a brand-new school, and I taught fourth grade, and began to understand what you ladies have been talking about from that day on. It's still there, always has been. Unfortunately, we haven't solved the issue yet, but getting better at it. So, thank you very much, and they all asked, diddle, same questions. We'll see what happens.
So, I did have more questions, but I think, in the interest of time, you know, I do, I see we're getting long in the, well, we're getting a little late in the meeting. So, I do want to make sure that we respect folks' times who are here. Perhaps we can continue this conversation either in another meeting, and all those other things. But I also want to sort of end by saying, I think this also highlights an opportunity, another opportunity, in addition to those that have been identified. We, I keep bringing up this idea of a grant writer, because there is, there's not necessarily identified money that comes from the state, but there is funding that we can go through, that we can go for, and if we had an identified grant writer, we have more flexibility because we have a defined approach, and we can build systems around those grants. So, I, for a lot of reasons, I, I push for the grant writing. So, I do want to thank all of you for coming, the presentation. We still have more work to do, obviously, but, you know, at least we have a baseline understanding of kind of where we are, and so, now we have some direction on where we can get to. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to have a question. Is there a resource still on Arnold Drive for parent group, or is that gone? It's been a long time ago that I remember.
Our SELPA office is actually based in Concord. I have been here three years. It's actually not within our, within where our districts all are. Over the next two years, we are looking at moving our offices to one of our district locations, so that we are not just closer to the students and to the families, but really have a pulse on what's going on. At our offices, parent groups pre-COVID used to meet really regularly. It has almost all gone virtual at this point. My hope is that by getting our offices back to a school site, not only are we closer to our communities that we're serving, but that we start meeting more in person. I love virtual, but it needs to be a combination of both, and not just in isolation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, thank you all for your presentation. Thank you. All right, so we will keep the meeting going. Next up is public presentations, item nine, there are none. Oh, I'm sorry.
President Lewis, is it possible that we could bring up item 14C? We have people who are in the audience.
14C?
14C to answer questions if the board has any, that's, if that's the rule of the board.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and bring up item 14C.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a proper second? Okay, a motion on the floor, proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. So, we will suspend the rules and go with item number 14, Resolutions for Immediate Action, 14C, specifically Resolution Number 20232432, Resolution of the Board of Education of Antioch Unified School District, ordering an election to authorize an issuance of general obligation bonds, establishing specifications of the election order, and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on March 5th, 2024. That was a mouthful.
So, good evening. I had Katie, we have Katie Dobson here from Jones Hall, who is our legal, our legal bond counsel, to answer any questions you might have on the resolution.
All right, so, did you have a presentation, or was it?
I don't have a formal presentation. I can walk you through the resolution if that would be helpful. Okay, so, before you this evening is a resolution calling a general obligation bond election, and consolidating that election with others occurring on March 5th, 2024. So, most.
Technology, can you pull that resolution up, please? Thank you.
This resolution calls the election in the amount of $195 million, and requests that the county consolidate the resolution with others occurring on that same day. There are three appendices to this resolution. The first is the full text of the bond measure. That is what voters will be presented with in their sample ballot. Appendix B is the 75-word ballot question. This is what voters will choose yes or no in response to on their ballots. And Appendix C is the tax rate statement, which gives taxpayers in the district information about what their tax levy will be in connection with this bond measure. And the district has, district administration has opted to add some additional disclosure to be explicitly transparent to voters about what those taxes will be. So, that was a very fast overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so, we'll start with trustee Hack. Any questions?
I do not have any.
Trustee Hernandez?
And just to clarify, the language on here is, was decided based off that, that survey that we had before?
Yes, so, the survey informs Appendix A, that bond project list, and starting on page A3 is a list of specific types of projects that bond proceeds can finance.
And then Appendix B, that's the same question that was in the survey?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes. It had, we made some minor tweaks, but that's essentially the question. Yes, and so, Appendix A took feedback from the community, and parents, and staff, and incorporated all of those projects.
Got it, okay, but yeah, that's all the questions I have.
Trustee Dr. Jack?
Fine.
Trustee Rocha, okay. All right, so this is a resolution for immediate action, so I will entertain a motion.
All motion to approve item 14C, Resolution Number 20232432.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. So, we will go back to, I believe, Section 9A, public presentation. There are none. Section 10, consent items, are there any items that anyone would like to pull?
Section 10, consent items, 10H.
10H?
We got an email that that will be pulled.
Yes, we're pulling that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so I, if there are no other items to be pulled, do I have a motion on the floor?
Make motion to approve the consent items minus H.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve all consent items minus, item H. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, item 11A, action items, there are none. Item 12, items for information discussion and action by board, there are none. Item 13, resolutions for first reading, there are none. Item 14, there are three remaining. A, resolution four, I can entertain a motion unless there's one that need to be pulled.
I think we should highlight D.
D, you want to pull it and have a conversation? Oh, yeah, okay, yes. So, I have a speaker card, thank you for highlighting that, trustee Hernandez. Speaker card for item 14D.
Look, I know it's late, but we got to do this. In 1954, the U.S. Supreme Court's landmark ruling of Brown versus Board of Education ended racial segregation in public schools. However, southern states continued to resist Ruby kindergarten in a segregated classroom. In 1960, a federal court ordered Louisiana schools to desegregate. The school district created an entrance exam to see if African-American students could even handle being in an all-white school. Ruby and five other students passed the exam. The six students were to be sent to two different all-white schools. The school district delayed their start, and Ruby's first day of school was November 14th, 1960. A few days before the start of the school, the two African-American students who were going to attend with Ruby decided to stay in their home school. Ruby braved William France Elementary School on her own. School board trustees, superintendent, district staff, community, and parents, get ready. Lace up your sneakers, because Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day is just around the corner. Secure your spot and prepare to walk with purpose on November 14th, as we honor the bravery and resilience of Ruby Bridges by walking to school together. Register now and be a part of a day that honors courage, diversity, and the power of public education. First, I would want to say thank you to the school board. Thank you to the superintendent and the associate superintendent for seeing and understanding why this is so meaningful right now. We are bringing Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, not only the first time here in Contra Costa County, but right here in the city of Antioch. And as I look forward to making this an annual celebrated event, we need all of you to join forces at Dallas Ranch Middle School on November the 14th. We will have a breakfast, then we'll have community resources that will be available to our, to serve, that really, really resonates what happens at our school, school sites throughout this district. When speaking to Ruby Bridges, I cried the whole time, because it was very moving to speak to someone of icon of my history. Dr. Jag, our history, and so many. Clyde, our history. And being able to know that she was very, she's still very vibrant and thriving and doing this work. Her push is to one day have a national recognition of Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, and I promise, I vow to do it.
What time breakfast?
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. Okay, so, thank you for that, you know, making sure that we are celebrating our history is vitally important, and that folks are aware. So, with that, and thank you for the reminder, trustee Hernandez, I will entertain a motion.
We need to vote on A and B also.
A, B, oh, well, that's what I'm saying, I'll entertain a motion, maybe we can do it all together?
Motion for A, B, and D.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve A, B, and D. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Go ahead.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right, so 15, resolutions for second reading and action, there are none. 16, board policies for first reading, there's one, revised board policy 5131.7, weapons and dangerous instruments, there's no action on this one, so we can continue going. This, exactly, this is for first reading. 17, board policies for second reading and action, there are two. First is revised board policy 5126, awards for achievement, and the second is revised board policy bylaw 9270, conflict of interest. Do I have any conversation, or do I have a motion on the floor?
A motion, and move approval.
All right, so I, there's no, okay, so I have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have any, do I have a second?
For A and B?
For A and B.
Second.
Okay, so a motion on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right. Item 18, information, items for general information, there are none. Future agenda items from board members, I will start. I think we need to have a very serious conversation about a grant writer, so, you know, I'm going to push for, to have that on the next agenda. Trustee Dr. Jag?
You are the board president, so you don't have to push to have anything on the board, on the agenda.
Fair enough.
You want it on agenda.
Fair enough.
It's going to be on agenda.
Fair enough.
All right. All right, so.
Future meetings?
Action item, I was disappointed that the educational equity and excellence audit was not on this agenda, as we said it would be. So, I'm hoping that it will be on the next agenda. And then also, the special education committee is a big one. I think having some kind of committee to talk about those things, so those two committees. That's it for me.
Okay. Trustee Rocha?
I'm fine.
Okay. Trustee Hernandez?
I also would like to see a grant writer discussion.
Boom. All right. Trustee Hack?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, all right. Next up is additional comments, which exceed the first 30-minute session, there were none. All right, there aren't any additional. Item 21, reports, comments from board members, we'll start with trustee Hack.
Um, I have none.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, so I'll be shorter today and just focus on highlighting the book for today, very appropriate. It's called, "I Am Ruby Bridges," written by Ruby Bridges, so, yes, very important book. Again, Ruby Bridges Day is November 14th. It's, it's a very beautiful book, I definitely recommend people read it. And again, I'm always finding, trying to find ways to get these into our classrooms, so if anyone is particular to this copy, I'm happy to get it to you. And I think, the thing I want to highlight that I think is so important about the story of Ruby Bridges is that what she did at the time was not popular. People did not think she was doing the right thing, and I think it's a reminder for ourselves to continue to think about, that we're not siloed away from the same historical forces and the same things that happened, that there are things going on today that people find unpopular, that may be what we should be doing. Sometimes we are identifying things that we shouldn't be doing, but sometimes there's things that we're fighting against, that in the future, we'll look back and think we were so foolish to not have pushed forward these things. So, I think Ruby Bridges is such a reminder for us to continue to think about, what are we not doing right now? What can we recognize right now that we could be fighting for harder, that maybe our first instinct isn't to fight for? So, it's just such a great story, and it's unfortunate that she had to live that story, but it was such an important sacrifice, such an important effort that she did to do this, because it's, doing the right thing is not easy. If the, doing the right thing was easy, we'd already be doing it. It's when things are hard that it's the right thing to do so often, unfortunately. So, again, Ruby Bridges Day, November 14th, I appreciate all the work that this district is doing to highlight that, and all the work that our community members are doing to highlight this very important day.
Thank you. Trustee Dr. Jag?
The school visit, I visited Antioch Charter Academy Number One, met with co-principal Edna Keller, who shared a bit about the charter's history. I didn't realize they've been around for over 20 years, the charter, and she's one of the founding teachers, so I thought that was neat. The school is a monastery and project-based model, and also, I love the, the sense of community they built, like, it, and I thought, like, this needs to be replicated with their garden and their wholesomeness, and the, the project-based learning, the inclusion. I could not tell which students had IEPs. They have 15% of their student population that have IEPs as well, and the inclusion was just a beautiful kind of mix, so shout out to Antioch Charter Academy. And the reason why I visited that school is, one, I got an invitation, but two, I'm a strong believer that we charter them, there are students too, and so, I just want to make sure they're, they were doing well, and they are. And we attended the NAACP Champions for Youth Event, great job, we have some of the youth here. It was a beautiful occasion, and four of us were able to make it. And then, myself and an organization called STEM for Real are having a community event in April, and we are seeking volunteers. I'll have to figure out a way to get that information out. I'll have to figure out a way to get that information out to the community, and I'll talk with you about it because I know there is a process to send out information. And so definitely looking for folks to volunteer, but we really are focused on diversity in STEM, so people with disabilities, women, people of color, like how we've contributed to the STEM fields, and there will be wonderful hands-on stations. And I already got connections with teachers who are like, yes, we'll do stations, and also high school students who are going to volunteer. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Trustee Rocha.
I attended a couple of the schools for the Day of the Dead, and also I was part of the Missions element budget meeting. And I just wanted to announce that next year, Mission will be going into their 50th year, and there'll be a celebration. They're already starting to form that group. And the next thing was that I was really surprised, and I brought it back to the superintendent, is at the Contra Costa County School Board Association's meeting, they had a great presentation, and our Joe.
Our former technology.
Yes, was the main hit of the show. I was, it was on, on computer, I mean, you know, the video. But it was so interesting because they said the first ones to be attacked by, by the cyber was, of course, colleges, and they were next. Military was next, and then now we are K to 12, the main subject. And it could take one week, three months, almost six months to get back, if not close the school completely because of the issue that everything needs to be frozen to clean it up. And so I'm hoping that we're okay with our, our field of protection, and as board members that we're supposed to be more knowledgeable about it, but it's so foreign.
Cyber security is, is huge.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. So a couple things, you know, as was mentioned earlier, we attended the NAACP Youth banquet, and that was really well-received, and it was really well-attended, had the chance to have some really fun and interesting conversations. Heard Gavin sort of lead the meeting, so, you know, kudos to that. In addition, so I, I'm out in the community quite a bit, and so one of the things that I would like to highlight is, this last couple weeks, you know, we oftentimes talk about the work that we do and things like that, but I had a really interesting time. I've been mentoring this young person. I can call them young, they're in their 30s. I'm not, so I can call them young. And so, you know, she had some life challenges, I won't mention names, obviously, but she had some life challenges. And this week, actually, last week, we were able to get her, she has a background, and we were able to get her felony expunged. In addition to that, she's, we've worked with, I'm, I've been working with her, and she's in the GED program. So now not only does she have a new lease on life in terms of like being able to apply for different types of jobs, but now she's also getting on the education track. So I wasn't going to highlight that because it's not, I don't do it like, look at me, that's just not who I am. But, you know, I do want to highlight that. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention the situation that was brought up this last week at Sutter Elementary. You know, that was, I do want to sort of extend and sort of make, make it known that I do understand and I do appreciate the weight and the gravity of, you know, the history of, of blackface, because that's what, you know, folks were referring to. And folks, for folks who don't understand, blackface was initially started in 1843 by a guy named Dan Timmott, I'm sorry, Dan Emmett. And it came, it sort of stemmed from the minstrel shows in, in England, and it migrated here. What happened was, there were people that would dress up in caricature of black people. They would draw on big lips and all those things. As a result of the history, you know, these things is sort of trend, it's looked at in movies and all these different things. So there's a history there. There's weight. The thing that really sort of drove this home, I was having a conversation with a friend of mine a couple weeks ago, and she and I were talking about some of the police brutality and some of the responses. And I was like, well, you know, this all ties back to Emmett Hill. She had never heard of Emmett Hill. And this is a friend of mine who's an educated person, who are in their 60s, who had never heard of Emmett Hill. So oftentimes, when we're having these conversations, I had the same look. Oftentimes, we're having these conversations, there is an assumption that everybody understands these experiences, these things at the same level. They don't. I think this situation that happened is an opportunity for us to come together, and I think the term that was used here was unity in the community, for us to create an opportunity to learn, because there's things that I don't know. And so I'm willing to come together and have a conversation around how do we move this conversation and our community forward. So I would end there, because I can get long-winded. And it looks like the next item is item 22, future meeting information. The next meeting is December 13, and the following is January 24, 2024. We're already in 2024. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Move rule.
All right. Do I have a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?